And then I'm gonna start the live feed to Facebook here, it'll take a moment. Ten more seconds and I'll be back to you. Okay, we are live on Facebook now, we're also recording on Zoom. We do have several attendees here, I'm just gonna share my intro screen. Where did that go? There we go. Okay, so just a few. Just a few instructions for us as we get rolling here. For the public that's in attendance, you are automatically muted. If there is a reason for you to desire to speak at the meeting, there will be two agenda items for that this evening. It will, I'll be able to unmute you and bring you in to speak during the meeting. So listen for those instructions when you get to those items, and those two are, one is for public comments, items not on the agenda. That item will be on the agenda, you're limited to one minute per attendee, and there's a process where below on the screen you can click to raise your hand. I will see that raised hand, and then I'll let people in to speak in the order that those hands go up. If someone is on the phone participating, I will need to call upon all those phone participants because they can't raise their hand virtually to find out if they have any comments. Same process will be used for the public hearing portion of the meeting. I think what we usually use for, left for that, Chris, is it three minutes or two minutes on public hearings?
Two minutes.
Two?
Two minutes, I believe.
Okay, so that would be the instruction then for the public hearing section. So for the members of the board and those presenting, also, please remain muted unless you need to participate. Whoops, boy, that went. That didn't go well. I see what I can do. There you go. So for board members, please leave your camera on, but for everybody else who's a presenter, please leave your camera off unless you're also you're in the process of presenting. When there's board discussion, just to make sure we don't happen to miss anyone who may have had a comment to make. When there is an opportunity for comments, Chris will go around the room and ask all board members whether they have comments or not. Similarly, the roll call will be taken for all votes, and just remember to unmute yourself on those. So with that, I'll turn it over to Caitlin, to Chris to start the meeting, and Caitlin to call the roll.
Okay, I'm gonna call the village board meeting for May 18th, 2020, order, roll call, please.
Nyla Frye, here. Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Aaron Moran. Bill Rannam.
Here.
Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Zoller.
Here.
Okay, I'll just point out, Erin contacted me earlier today, she is very ill, and that's why she's not on for this evening. Okay, next we have confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wantake Tribune on Thursday, May 14th. The final agendas were posted on May 14th, and the final agenda and packet were made available online on May 15th.
Okay, thank you. First item we have is consent agenda, would anybody like anything pulled, or I'd look for a motion?
I would move approval of consent agenda.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg, second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Seeing no hands, I'll call the question, Caitlin, roll call, please.
Nyla Frye.
Hi.
Kristen Rungy.
Hi.
Phil Rannam.
Hi.
Chris Zoller.
Hi.
Phil Williams.
Hi.
Gary Hertzberg.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you, okay. Next item is public comments, for items not on the agenda seating, if there's anybody who'd like to make any public comments, please let Caitlin Todd know by putting your hand up.
So again, for public comments, items not on the agenda, I'm watching, we have seven attendees at the moment. I don't see any hands up, I do, I do though like to confirm the functionality of that. So I do wanna bring in Roberta, I always do this to you, sorry. Roberta, are you able to speak?
Yes, hello.
All right, very good, thank you, hi, Roberta. All right, I'll send you back to the attendee group.
Anyone else?
No hands are, no hands are raised, Chris, I did wonder if I could take a quick moment, I, I do wanna show them something to the board and to the public that's gonna be made public tomorrow morning, if I could.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully. Okay, so one of the common, a common question we get along with a, a common question that occurs in various public settings, whether someone's talking at the grocery store, or chatting on social media, or what have you, is what's going on there? What's going on north of Boston's, or what's happening with that project? What I've spent some time with our executive assistant Kylie West and Tracy Mineholdt's doing is creating a GIS or a, a Google map that's gonna allow us to easily demonstrate to the public what's going on with current development activity in the village. So we were still inputting a little bit of information, but very basically, what you're gonna be able to do is go onto the village website. Here you can see a current development activity in the, in the village, but this is gonna bring up a village map, and it will have essentially two items. The purple represents projects that are not broken ground yet, they're still in the planning and permitting process. The green dot would be projects that are underway. So if you enlarge the screen, it's a little bit easier. So here's a list of all the projects that we have included, it's very possible I might have missed one, so I'm not gonna claim to have made this absolutely foolproof yet. But if, for example, someone has a question about the, again, that gas station by, by Boston's. We can go down there, again, there's that color code, the project's underway, little bit of an icon that can indicate what's happening. And if you click on that, it will bring up some basic information about the project. Basic description, when it started, the contact, some final approval details, even some links that will get you to supporting information. In addition, we will add a couple of images that help tell the story of the project, see if I can scroll here. There you go. So those basic details, to really give a snapshot of what the project is, by no means is this the complete record. And I actually have a disclaimer, you see here at the bottom, whoops, down here at the bottom of each listing, that notes that the content might not be the most current information. The best place to get essentially the latest up-to-date stuff would be to contact the engineering and planning staff. But for the most part, this can answer people's question on most, most every development occurring. We included, also included details about neighborhoods that are under development. So if I click on the West Bridge, it'll bring up details about that, along with pictures of the development, the lots, etc. So that is gonna be, I think technically it might be live at this very moment, but we hope to have it sort of good and ready to go tomorrow morning, and we'll do a little bit of social media blasting to let people know that we have this feature available now. So thanks for letting me share that, Chris.
Thank you, Todd, I think that's a great utility piece for all of our residents, or anybody who's interested in Wantakee, so good job. Okay, any other public comments from any of the board members or anything, otherwise I'll move on. I don't see any hands, so I'm gonna move on. First item we have is a public hearing, public hearing and discussion action for development agreement, certified survey map and rezone from A1 Agriculture to C1 Commercial Quick Trip LLC to construct a convenience store with fueling canopy at County Highway Q across from Peaceful Valley Parkway. Kevin, are you interested in listening?
I will, yes. And Todd, if you could share your screen and go to page 38 of the packet.
Okay, I'll get there.
And good evening, everyone. So this has been recommended for approval by the, by the Village Plan Commission, as well as the Joint Plan Commission, and really, the Joint Plan Commission is the one that has authority in this particular area. This is a proposal to rezone a parcel of land that's gonna be, would be created tonight as Lot 1. It's an extension of the Peaceful Valley Parkway on the west side of County Trunk Q. And many of you are aware that this is a proposed Quick Trip at this location. So tonight's action by the village board is not to approve the Quick Trip, but really to approve the land division, which is the creation of the lot, and then approving the zoning, which is from agricultural holding district to a commercial. But we do have a recommendation that's been, and also recommended by the Joint Planning Commission, to rezone the property to commercial, but then deed restricted to a convenience store, fueling islands, the type of things that go along with the Quick Trip. And, you know, some of the reasoning behind that is that originally when this land was being proposed, probably a half a year ago or more, as part of the festival foods, they're in the same position, it was, at that point, it was gonna be the same thing, it was gonna be a Quick Trip, but it was gonna be restricted in terms of only that type of commercial use was allowed. But we're, we're also suggesting the deed restriction because we don't know what the, what the final planning is around this lot. We, we know that the area is, is in the comp plan as residential, and then some quasi-commercial uses along the, along the County Trunk Q corridor, really all the way up to Woodland Drive. So without knowing all the details of what that planning is gonna look like, we know that the convenience store will fit well, but there may be other commercial uses that we don't know will fit well until we ultimately see the planning that goes on around, around this area. So that's it for introduction, Chris, so with that, I would suggest that you open and hold the public here.
Okay, then I'm going to open up the public hearing, it is 6:17.
So those attending, now's the moment, if you do care to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. Chris, there's no hands raised by attendees, although Mike Lawton does have his hand raised from the applicant.
Okay, I'll give a couple, a couple more seconds here for anybody in the public that would like to make a comment.
Okay.
Okay, anything, Todd?
No hands raised.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mike Lawton would like to speak, so I'll give him that opportunity right now.
I just wanted to indicate that I, we'd be happy to answer questions if anybody has any questions on it. I don't think, we, I think Kevin did a good job of explaining the project.
Okay, then in normal fashion, I'm gonna go around with the board members and see if you have any questions, we'll start with Gary Hertzberg.
I mean, if a joint plan and the planner behind this, I think it should move forward. No questions.
Okay, Kristen Rungy?
No questions for me.
Phil Williams?
I think it'll be a nice entrance to the subdivision that's gonna be opening up over there, so I, I have no further questions on it.
Okay, Nyla Frye?
Okay, I would just like to convey some questions, comments that I've received from citizens. And one of them that I keep hearing over and over again is would Wantakee be better served if the site brought needed goods and our services to the village, other than another Quick Trip? Another comment I keep hearing is, why three Quick Trips? Will, will these three Quick Trips put other convenience, guest, convenience store, gas stations out of business? And I know this is about zoning, and it's not necessarily about the Quick Trips, but I think that they go together. And I just want, and then the other question, other thing is that when it comes to zoning, I'm always told that the village has really no control over what businesses come into Wantakee. My question, I have a question pertaining to that, which I don't know if it should be answered now or later, is, is there a way that this could be done, other, I don't know if the PUDs come into this or what, but is there a way that development can occur where the village would have more of a say in, in how the development is done?
Okay, let's see, Kevin, do you wanna try to take some of those questions, or should we have Brian take some of those questions from now? Either one?
I would say, you know, Brian may wanna start, or I can maybe start, Brian, if, is Brian on?
I don't see him.
Nyla, just a question back, is there a particular commercial use that you think that should go there over, over another commercial use?
No, no, I don't, but we have, you know, there are many needs in Wantakee, other than gas and convenience, you know, type things. I don't have anything in particular, nobody mentioned any particular thing, but I do know there are, you know, many different needs in Wantakee.
Yeah, I would, I would start off by saying, Nyla, that the comprehensive plan had this area planned for commercial use. And the proposed use, the zoning use, is consistent with that land, with the land use. And then we can't rezone a property or deny a rezone property if it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. So what they're proposing, a commercial use, is consistent with our comprehensive plan. So we're going one step further here, and we're asking the board to actually further restrict it to no more, nothing, nothing more than a, than a convenience store. And so there's other commercial uses, and I know that we've restricted some on the other side. I'll give you an example of one that we restricted, we had some commercial uses that were allowed. Tattoo parlors, you know, that's not probably an area that we think would be an appropriate place for a tattoo parlor. So that is why we're, we're suggesting that this be restricted as a commercial use. And because it's gonna be residential around it, it's, you know, it's the commercial use is, is consistent, but there, maybe there's a, you know, auto repair place that would be consistent with the commercial zoning, which, you know, because of noise or other issues, that it may not be appropriate in, really adjacent to residential properties. Brian, you can probably ask, you know, answer it better from a legal perspective, in terms of what are, really what our discretion is at the board level, or even at the village level. We can't interfere with the free market, we can't say, we've had enough Quick Trips, we wanna see a, a different kinda convenience store, that, that would be a, and Brian can explain, you know, the constitutional, you know, problems with that, and the potential for a lawsuit if, if we did restrict it like that.
Yeah, I guess I would say this is somewhat of a unique situation, in light of the deed restriction that we're, village staff is recommending that you have, where it's gonna be limited to the convenience store for the reasons that Kevin had identified. I, I guess if, if you were to rezone this property and to, to the C1 District, if, if you look at the code, I mean, there's a number of different permitted uses that are commercial in nature, and, and essentially, once you rezone it to commercial, then how it gets you, as long as it's a permitted use, they just have to satisfy that use, and, 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 you know, we don't have the ability to say, because something is zoned commercial, and a restaurant can go there, that we want a Panera versus a Taco Bell. I mean, even though, you know, that, that may be the case, and nothing against Taco Bell, I mean, we just, municipalities don't have that authority. The only, then, and then I think this would be a discussion now, potentially for a different time, would be, if you look one way that municipalities across the country, some of them have sought to control the commercial use, is to prohibit drive-throughs. There definitely have been some communities in California that have done that, because in particular, they did not like the fast food restaurants. The difficulty with that is that if you're gonna ban drive-throughs, for example, as a way to try to not have fast food restaurants, that's also going to apply to banks, and to dry cleaners, and any other entity that would have a drive-through. I can talk, we can talk offline about it further if you'd like, but, I mean, generally, I agree with what Kevin is saying, you know. I think, I think your options here are either, I mean, the only justification potentially to, to not rezone tonight, and this is not village staff's recommendation, but the only justification would be because we don't know what's gonna go around there, we don't wanna do any, any rezoning whatsoever. But I do believe that we have a, a memo from the village planner indicating that he thinks it's, he thinks it's appropriate to, to rezone the land, that he, he believes that the, the convenience store use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that it will fit in this neighborhood. Basically, you know, not necessarily knowing what's gonna go around it, but his belief from a planning standpoint is that it's gonna fit, no matter what goes around it. And obviously, right now, the developer is gonna be subject to whatever the uses are, as identified within the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Todd, right now, has up the C1 zoning district, and, I mean, not, there are so many permitted uses within that district that they don't even fit on one page. And, and that's typical for a municipality, and for a zoning, a commercial zoning district within a municipality.
That was me, Ryan, but yes, sharing my screen.
Okay, Nyla, any other questions, or are you done? You're on mute still.
That's it pertaining to this issue, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Nyla, okay, next we have Bill Rannam.
You remind me who's, how the, the improvements are funded, and otherwise I have none.
Yes, so just going back to the, the extension of the roadway, and all the stormwater improvements, the road improvements, street lighting, that's all funded by the developer. So there is no tax dollars or general fund levy that's supporting this development.
Okay, Bill, any other questions, are you done?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. The only comment I would make in regards to this, well, two comments, one, as Gary pointed out, the plan and the joint plan have approved this. And Nyla's comment about three locations, if there's talk in the community that, you know, why three Quick Trips in Wantakee? The property that was located next to Boston's where the other Quick Trip is going was actually going to be a Mefferts, which would have had their third gas station in the community had they not, had they moved forward with that. So I don't think it's necessarily unusual to have a, a user have more than one location when it comes to convenience stores. And this has been the model for Quick Trips, to have two of them, especially in divided highway situations, and to make it easier for their customers. And I think it's a good thing for our community to have it the way it's set up, being safe. So those are my only comments for that. So with that, we have the recommended motion in front of us for anybody who would like to make that.
Chris, if I could, it's just the second, Brian has advised us that we, we shortened the second motion, and it's just a motion to approve the rezone of lot, it just, and end it after the, after the general commercial district, or Brian, am I saying that right?
So, so there's, there's gonna be three total motions related this agenda item, and Kevin's identified one of the motions, the one related to the rezone. And so that's, when you look at your page 37 of your packet, that's actually the second motion that's identified there. And, you know, our recommendation, and what I believe is, is that we need to remove the language that says, says, "subject to final review by the village engineer, village attorney, and town attorney." Essentially, the village board is in a position to, to need to make the decision about whether the rezoning, and if it's gonna be rezoned, if the deed restriction is gonna apply. I don't think that we're in a position to give to Kevin, and to me, and to Tom, additional discretion, because then I would be concerned quite frankly that we didn't make a zoning decision. So that's that motion, I would just put a period after the lot in the third line. There's also another motion would be, when you get to the agreement itself, that I think Bill had asked about, and Kevin had commented on, we would have our standard form public improvements agreements that would apply to the different street work, utility work, road, other public improvements. That would, we'd seek approval of that, and, you know, just to bring you back, Kevin had mentioned, I think, before, that this land previously, about eight months ago, was, was part of the proposed festival foods larger development, and we approved a public improvements agreement related to that development. The new one related to this development is, is almost identical, just dial back a little bit because the, there's not as much roadwork.
Chris, this is Todd, before you vote, a couple more people did come in as attendees. One individual has put a comment in the chat. If you, do you care to reopen the public hearing, or do you want to consider the chat comment? I, if you wanna reopen the public hearing, I'm happy to bring that, bring that person in to ask their question. Unless, unless, Brian, you have, you have other suggestions.
Well, I think, I think we can probably answer the question, uh, cuz I think this relates to, this relates to the, the agreement. Um, I'm just gonna read what the, what the comment is, "I hope the multi-use path is put in when the project is completed and not delayed." And so Kevin, I think that that may be related to the discussion that you had in front of the Plan Commission, or Joint Plan Commission, about grading for a path along the west side of Q, but making a decision at a later date as to whether or not that would be put in.
Yeah, let me try and, I'll share my screen again. And what the Plan Commission, Joint Plan Commission recommended approval is, and I gotta give a little more background here, when the festival foods was moving forward, there was a discussion about requiring a multi-use path on the west side of County Trunk Q. So there's a, there's currently a trail on the east side of County Trunk Q that goes from, you know, Peaceful Valley Parkway all the way up to Woodland Drive, and then all the way into town. There was discussion when the, when the grocery store was being proposed, to have that same trail duplicated on the other side of, of Q. And you will remember is that we never had planned for that, the trail system along County Trunk Q on that side of the road. It was always envisioned that the, the trail system for that roadway would be internal. The Plan Commission at that point had a pretty, pretty long discussion, and ended up really taking a position that the trail was not needed. But in this case, we don't know what the planning is gonna be around this site. And so what I've recommended, and what they've agreed to, and what's in the developer's agreement, is that the developer has agreed to grade this area, so a multi-trail system could go in, so we're really deferring that decision to a later date to really make that decision with better information of whether or not it's gonna be needed. Because if this just is a back of a multifamily project, it, it likely doesn't make any sense to have that trail system where it's not really servicing, servicing anything, where all the activity is gonna be on the Peaceful Valley Parkway. And just, just a note here, this is not wind drive anymore, there was a condition of approval that ultimately this road will wind in and connect into Holiday Drive, and that will be the backbone of this trail system, so it'll be internal. And it makes more sense to make that decision, at least the Plan Commission, Joint Plan Commission, and, and myself, all agreed that it makes better to make that decision at a later date when we have better information of whether or not that trail system is gonna be necessary.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the comment as well. All right, so back to our motions, we've got, is it three, Brian, is that correct?
Yes, so, so if you, if you look at page 37 of your packet, there's one motion that's, so there was one motion that's related to the certified survey map, and as it's identified, that's the suggested motion by village staff, then there's a second motion on the zoning, and then the third motion that's not on there is, is related to the development agreement, and I can, once we get to it, if you'd like me to, I can. And I can, once we get to it, if you'd like me to, I can, I can say what the appropriate motion should be.
Okay, so let's do the first one then, which is motion to approve the certified survey map subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and incorporation of village staff comments. Do we have that motion from someone?
So moved.
I, I have Kristen Rungy first.
I'll second.
And second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments from anybody? Todd, can you put it so I can see everybody? Right now, I've only got three board members that I can see. Thank you. If anybody has any comments, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Chris Selner.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, then the second motion I'll read is motion to approve the rezone of the lot to be purchased by Quick Trip from A1 Agricultural Holding District to the C1 General Commercial District with the attached deed restrictions recorded on the lot. Do we have that motion?
Bill moved.
Motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
Second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, Caitlin, please roll call vote.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Selner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Nyla, you're muted.
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Okay, then Brian, could you read the next one?
Sure. Motion to approve public improvements agreement associated with the Quick Trip lot, subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and village attorney.
So moved.
A motion by Kristen Rungy.
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye. You just.
Nyla, you're muted. Now you're unmuted. Nope, you're muted.
Mine's saying the opposite thing, abstain.
Okay, Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random. Bill Random.
You're muted.
I've red his lips. Yes.
Still muted.
Bill, thumbs up for yes, thumbs down for no.
Chris Selner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have as new business discussion and update regarding village procedures and impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. Todd, do you want to introduce or, and turn over to whoever you're going to speak tonight?
Yeah, I, this is interesting because even after the department head team submitted their memos and, which was middle last week, and by the time I uploaded those to this packet, and by the time we got here to this very meeting, we have had the Supreme Court overturn a decision, the state attempt to weigh in, the county initially weighed in, and now the county issued a new set of orders that will take effect at 8:00 AM tomorrow. So three, if not four, curveballs have flown since all the department heads gave thoughts to what reopening or whatever this next phase of business for us looks like. So we're, we're really flying in interesting times here, but I do appreciate the hard work of the department, of the department heads and looking at and giving serious thought to what, what's going to be the best way as we approach kind of the new, new phase of doing the work that we've been doing. And what I like to do is give them a chance to not, hopefully you had a chance to read those memos, they really did a nice job with them, but I want to give them a chance to chat with you about that. And what I asked them was sort of a concern at this window between today and when our lar, our larger region isn't yet vaccinated, I think is what is left as time of concern. And the question to the departments was what type of changes do you expect or do you recommend to your programs or facilities during that period? I also asked, what are some common questions that your department's receiving and how are you answering them? I asked how are they thinking about permanent changes to their facility or operations? And then what perhaps fiscally is worrisome to them? I also asked them if they could wage, ways, wave a magic wand, what, what would they wish for if they could be granted one wish? And they all gave some good thought to that. And I'd like, Chris, for us to go around the room with department heads and ask them to share their thoughts. I know not included in the packet, but emailed out just today, it might have been, was a memo from Scott Russell in regards to EMS operations. So I might go to Scott first and have him provide the board with an update, maybe also generally on the county's, county's efforts at, the latest efforts.
Todd, are you intending to go around to all the department heads?
Unless, unless they want to let their memo stand, I was thinking we'd go around and at least give them a chance.
Perfect.
Don't want to share anything.
You're around then.
Pardon me?
You can take everybody around then, okay?
Okay, very good. Scott?
Thanks, Todd. Um, starting with the county initiatives, as Todd said, everything came in pretty quick. I haven't had a chance to read through all of it yet. A lot of it does kind of mirror what the governor's original safer at home order and badger bounce back plan stuff had in it. It does go into a little bit further detail as far as certain requirements for different types of businesses and entities. It's certainly going to play a role in how the village opens up some of the, the buildings and services within our, our area goal. Unfortunately, I can't comment too much on it as I haven't had a chance to look through the whole thing in detail yet. Although as a county, we have been doing a pretty good job of flattening the curve. We haven't gotten hit too hard here over the last little while. There was a little bit of a spike over this last week, very, very little bit. We've been doing a really good job here in our district. We've been doing a very good job. We haven't seen any new cases on our end in over a week and a half now, which is pretty impressive. With that being said, I think my, my big public announcement with that would be as things start to open up, make sure you're diligent and still taking care of yourself. Continue to wear masks when you go out in public. Definitely keep your social distancing. Make sure to take care of your family when you do go out and when you do have to go out. As far as the EMS department goes, I do not project any real long-term changes right now. Unfortunately, it's a restless state and our area opens up, that's when we're going to start getting hit again with new cases. So we have to keep our, our operations going the way that we have been during the bulk of this pandemic, knowing that we're going to be getting more and more patients and seeing more and more patients with this. So a lot of our stuff is going to be remaining the same. We're going to continue to have what I call skeleton crews on the ambulances. We're going to be continuing to be in full PPE garb, continuing the reuse of PPE and sanitizing them when we can. We're going to keep our building closed for the public, for the foreseeable future. One of the things that Todd had asked us to put together were some frequently asked questions. A couple of them that I did want to get to, how many positive cases are there in our district? That's one that I hear quite a bit. That's not a number that we keep. We keep numbers based off of how many people are showing symptoms. And as most people know, those symptoms can mirror influenza on a lot of other different illnesses out there. With the fact that it's a community spread, spread virus right now, we just have to treat everybody as if they have it and are contagious. So that's just not a number that we keep at this point. I can tell you that we have seen an uptick in what we call the IDS positive, which is our, our symptomatic patients, even though the tests are coming back negative. So there's definitely some other, some other bugs going around right now as well. The other one, and it's a little bit off topic from the regular COVID, but a lot of people are asking us about our CPR certification classes that we normally hold. This is the time of the year, a lot of people starting to renew. Unfortunately, we are not holding those as of right now. We're working with the local training centers and AHA to provide online classes for that. There's going to be more to come on that one, but I did want to get that out there tonight. Again, with public messaging, I wrote this before everything came out today, but one big thing that I wanted to get out there, I'm starting to see it now kind of weighed up as you read through the news and you go out, is remember that, especially in this times, we all have to be accepting of other people's views. Everyone's going to have their own thoughts, their own views and their own fears of this virus and reopening of the state and county. I live right up close to the county line and I see both sides of it between Dane County and Columbia County. And we just all have to remember that we've all got our own viewpoints on this thing. And what people do isn't necessarily right, wrong. Everyone's got their own way of going about it. Just make sure you take care of what you can take care of, protect yourself the way you can. And we'll all get through this just fine. And if you guys are okay with it, as long as I have the microphone right now, again, a little off topic, yesterday was the start of National EMS Week. It's a time we don't really get to recognize our EMTs too often, so I slid the mic. I did want to thank our membership for all their hard work, late nights, long hours, dedication and sacrifices they give to our communities and keep them safe. You're definitely appreciated more than you'll ever know. So thank you very much for giving me the, the platform to say that. And with that, I guess I'll take any questions.
Raise your hand if you have a question for Scott.
I just want to say, Scott, thank you for all you're doing and make sure on behalf of the board, you thank all your volunteers as well. We really appreciate everything you guys do and the hard work you put in. Thank you.
Will do. Thanks, Chris.
I see heads nodding across the, across the virtual boardroom.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thanks, Scott. Caitlin, next. Kevin even is on deck.
Sorry about that. So here, for my operations responded to Todd's questions, from many of the programs in the clerks department are required by either local ordinance or state law, so there's not much operationally that we can change. Just like, like I outlined in my memo, there is, just like with liquor license that's going on right now, our department continues to look forward and be very proactive in communicating with those people who have licenses or things that are coming up to expire. So we continue to be proactive, especially now in the environment today, to make sure that we are communicating ahead of time, to make sure we have enough time to go forward. For election operations moving forward, we have two more elections that we need to administer in, one in August and one in November. And we are going to continue to prepare for, prepare for these elections, much like we did in April, for all the same precautions we did in April that we will be implementing for August and in November. The clerks department is responsible for managing and answering the main phone line at Village Hall. Generally, we're, we continue to receive some general, general questions for various operations in the village. We've updated our phone system message in Village Hall, so people, when they call, they know that we are limited staff in Village Hall. Now, if you leave a message, that staff will get back to you as soon as possible. If a member of the clerks department is in the office of Village Hall, we do answer that phone, answer those questions right away and forward them to the appropriate department or answer the questions if we can. Thoughts about what might permanently be different about our operations? Elections related, we do think that people voting absentee is going to continue into the future. I think people are now used to voting absentee and probably find convenience in it, receiving their ballot ahead of time, voting and mailing it in. So we see in the future that, that absentee voting will probably continue outside of elections. We're looking at things we can implement at the front desk at Village Hall and all of our customer service windows to safeguard staff and the public. So social distancing, plexiglass, things like that, we're looking into. Current budgetary concerns, the only thing that's big for us again is elections, but we have a pretty healthy carry forward for elections. And so there's no, there's no budgetary concerns from my department at this time. And if we could be, if we could be granted one wish, which was another question Todd asked, what would we ask for? Obviously, we can't change laws, so elections will just leave as they are. But I think something, if we could have one wish granted, would be a full-time communications person for the village. I think this pandemic and other things have shown us that now more than ever, the way we communicate with our citizens is really important and also ensuring that we have a consistent message across all boards is very important. So that was the outline before everything kind of changed today for my department. If there's any questions, please let me know.
So I will dovetail with one thing Caitlin brought up, and that's the, the office interaction at Village Hall. We've, we've been really successful at doing our work remotely and then, and also doing our work without in-person interaction. We've accommodated a number of ways for people to engage with us and get their business done without having, having to even come into the building. Village Hall isn't typically the place where people flock to. We're not as much a, a customer centerpiece as is the village center or the library is. And to the, and because we've been able to accomplish this sort of interaction with the public so well, I think is going to mean that as an office place, we're probably going to look to reopen to the public perhaps later than some other facilities because we're able to accomplish what we need to. I don't know exactly what that date looks like, but for the foreseeable future, I see us continuing to operate that way. And that's the type of feedback that I received or desires I received from the rest of the staff working the building. And unless any other staff here want to chime in, we haven't heard complaints from the public. I think people have been pretty satisfied that we're doing our best to get ahold of them without delay and addressing their questions. So raise your hand, board members, if you have a question for Caitlin. Okay, oh, Nyla. You're good, Nyla. We, oh, you just muted yourself. Nyla, you're muted.
Okay, this is a question as much for Dr. Random as for Caitlin. Can you hear me? Yep. Okay. And, and maybe, and probably for all the departments, it's what's going through my head is, because of what the virus is like, would it be beneficial for all departments to be doing a temperature scan of their employees when they come into the office? Or any department?
Yep, so I know when we were in full-blown election preparation mode at Village Hall, staff was taking their temperature when they arrived at work. And I believe there's conversations of that continuing. I know that the CDC has had some interesting, maybe some new guidelines or some different things they've said about temperatures in this virus, but we do have the equipment available for departments to be taking their temperature. I know Public Works has been taking, or had been taking their temperature. So I think, yes, that is something we, some departments are doing.
And we, we are definitely having thermometers available. The other thing we're doing, Nyla, is we're, we're being a little more rigid about if you don't feel well, don't come to work. Or if you have someone in your household or have been in contact with someone who really is not feeling well, do consider not coming into work. And we're, probably all departments are going to be a little more forceful in our expectations of abiding by that of our staff.
The current concern I have is from what I'm hearing, you know, people usually have transmitted it before they even know they have this. And the one check is the temperature. I may be totally wrong. That's why I'm asking Dr. Random, you know.
So we're doing temperature checks and we're doing a, at the clinics, which we're not at Wana Key right now, but we're doing a screener, which is basically a 10-question event, or you can stand and get your temperature checked, whichever one. So you can actually, on the app on your phone, you can go through the whole list and do it and then get, but we do have, we basically have guards at our front door, to be honest, to make sure you do one or the other, either do the app or the temperature. I think in the long run, all of our functions will change, especially at healthcare level, where there will be people monitoring who comes in and out, who comes in anyway. And that may be a lot longer than this virus, because this is just, who is to say you shouldn't do it with influenza and all the other things? So. So flow through will change for, at our sites, for sure.
The one thing I'd add, Nyla, is that every department is going to sort of have a different appropriate approach in that. For example, when people come to do their home-delivered meals now, the drivers, the volunteers, we do check their temperatures. Because their role is to go and interact with a population that's at risk. So that's been a practice that the senior center has put in place. I think, looking around the room at our department heads, I think there's going to be different, different levels of impact and places where there's going to be. Appropriate levels that are higher than others. So I think your point is a good one. And departments are going to keep, keep those approaches in mind. So Kevin, you're up. Eric, you're on deck.
Good evening again. So really not much has changed in terms of our departments from the last time we talked. We had really, you know, we're equipped to like continue to work under as essential workers. So the only thing that's really changed in Public Works is that we were, had a split shift where half the employees were staying home. Now with all the activities with, in our growing season and getting ready for spring and summer, it's, it's all hands on deck. We have a couple part-timers that have started. So all guys are working. It's just that their, or women are working. It's just a matter of their, their staggering their start times. So we have less overlap between the, the employees. Building inspection's been operating the same as, as we described last time. Doing, that's a little different. There's no face-to-face applications. Those are all put into a Dropbox. All the payments done online. All the inspections are done. They're done in person if, if nobody's occupied the house. But once a house has been occupied, we avoid going in. We rely on the homeowners to provide us videos and pictures. And if they're not sufficient, then we ask them to retake it. So our inspectors are really getting their information from the homeowners, you know, providing us that, that data. The only other add on, on building inspection with everybody working from home is that our neighborhood complaints are at an all-time high. We get noise complaints, we get, you name it, complaints. As, as I think Tracy puts it, neighbors are all home and they're not getting along. I would say the last thing is that we're becoming pretty sufficient. I think we're getting used to this new norm. And we expect this to last for several more months at least. And so I think we're continuing to become more efficient with meeting people in field, making appointments through Zoom meetings, taking phone calls. Rather than meeting face-to-face. So that's the, that's it for me. Questions?
All right, raise, board members, raise your hand if you have a question for Kevin. And I'd add it, I'd add in terms about getting proficient with things. I actually had a developer from Milwaukee interested in Wana Key. And I spent about 45 minutes giving them a virtual tour on Google Street View and Google Maps of our community. Which was an interesting way to show a developer around. Gary, I saw you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Hey Kevin, are the, the street projects on schedule or the, the contractors on schedule things?
We don't have a schedule yet, Gary, from our contractor. It's a repital contractor. It's painted golden. They have some subs. We started marking out the sidewalk. So, you know, they have the summer to complete it. You know, certainly we were anxious for them to get started, but they haven't. They have time. You know, we continue to ask them to get going on it because we know it's important. But we did start marking out some of the sidewalk improvements because that, the sidewalk improvements, the curb and gutter stuff has to get done before the street improvements.
Other questions for Kevin? Bill?
Is there, I mean, this may be the police and everything. Is there certain, is it all the neighborhoods where the neighbors aren't getting along? Or is there particular neighborhoods? Is it my neighborhood?
Bill, I don't know the details. I just know that the number is at an all-time high. I can't tell you which neighbors are, neighborhoods are the worst.
I would, I would qualify all that by saying it's been amazing to see all the neighborly activities that have occurred as well across our community. Lot of positives out there. So with that, I'll, thanks Kevin. Eric, I'll turn it over to you. And then on deck is Jody and Nick.
All right. Thanks, Todd. So we are continuing our curbside pickup of holds that started in late April. Right now, even with the curveballs that have been thrown the last six days, we're planning on continuing that at least into the month of June. So right now we have a skeletal staff. Do one week on and one week off. We think that beginning next week, we'll start to bring in more and more of our people as the social distancing aspects of the orders have lapsed. The next phase that we're looking at is probably going to be in mid-June, working with our partner libraries in Dane County. Where we would increase the amount of access to our collections. We would allow customer access into the lobby, into the new items area. But still limiting access so they wouldn't be able to go to the children's area or the meeting rooms or upstairs, for instance. There would probably be a limit on the amount of people who are in at any given time. I know that the county in their orders today said 25% capacity or. 10, or groups of 10 or less for this first phase. So we'll get more clarification on what that looks like for public libraries. There would be contact lists, pickup of holds inside the building. And then self-service checkouts of items on the shelves. Staff would be there to answer questions and to assist and to sanitize the self-checkout screen after the transactions are done. But there wouldn't be a staff circulation station anymore in terms of you hand me the book, I check it out and then hand it back to you. Or fines and those types of fees will all be paid online. New card applications will be done online or at least, well, they will be done online. We want to limit the amount of paper being passed back and forth. The other service that we would like to begin providing in the not-too-distant future is customer access to our computer labs. There is a, a small but necessary group of people who, who do rely on the library's PCs and printers. Fax machines and scanners. So we're looking at probably in the next two to four weeks, implementing some sort of. Access to those computer labs via appointment. We'll be looking at kind of how that would work. We're, we'll be kind of changing the layout of the furniture upstairs so that everyone is properly socially distanced. And, but kind of longer term, we don't really know what that layout looks like yet. So my staff and I and our partner libraries in the, in the county are really going to be working hard over the next week and a half. To kind of figure out what this next phase looks like and then before we can have a date. We want to do it safely. We want it to be slower rather than rushing to something and put the public at risk. So longer term, we're not going to have any library programs probably for the rest of the year. All of our programming will continue to be done virtually online. And then longer term, just I think the amount of hours that we're open to the public. Because we're going to have limits on public access for so many months going forward. It is going to necessarily lead to shorter hours and less staffing. So it's, it's going to have an impact. With that, any questions?
Board member, raise your hand if you have a question. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks.
Okay, the, the court, the municipal court team is up. And Cindy, you're on deck.
Thanks, Todd. I want to thank Jody for putting together the memo largely, which I reviewed and I thought was very good. I won't belabor the memo. I'll just note for everybody that the, the municipal court has kind of taken its lead from the circuit courts. As far as what it is that we are doing and the orders that we are under. Even in the circuit courts that they're doing most of their things remotely. Even for defendants who are in custody. So the current directive from the Wisconsin State Supreme Court runs through at least the end of May with the expectation. It will run through the summer, that things are going to be going remotely whenever possible. So as long as the virus threat remains, there is a strong presumption in the municipal court that court appearances will be handled. Remotely over video conference or over the telephone. The municipal court is kind of unique insofar as I, I don't want to put somebody in a position where they have to choose between. Exercising the rights that they have in a court setting and staying safe. So I want to make sure that as long as it's possible, as long as the virus is a threat. We are going to try and allow people to appear remotely so that nobody's afraid of coming to court. If they want to fight a ticket or they want to try and get a consideration for something, I, I just don't want anybody to refrain from coming to court. And exercising those rights because they're afraid from a public health status. Our upcoming June court date will occur over Zoom, just like we're all doing right now. It will be accessible to the public. I'm sure that Jody and I will make changes as things go along and as we learn to operate more efficiently. We have created a handout that we're going to be giving or supplying to the Wana Key Police Department. And asking them to directly give to people when they get a citation so that they have that Zoom link. Right in their hands when they get a citation. And that's, that's as opposed to just mailing them something and hoping that it gets to them in the mail. I really want to try and ensure that, that everybody knows what's going on with regard to court. If they want to come to court and they want to give their story to me. Our revenues are slightly down, but really not that much. We're about $1,300 off where we were last year. That's probably to be expected, given the fact that we did not have court in April or May. So we weren't doing a lot of those collections. And the number of citations being issued by the Wana Key Police Department is noticeably down. So I'll put it this way, if revenues were up, we'd probably have a problem. People would be asking, how the heck can revenues be up during this time? So revenues are down by, just by a small percentage, less than 5% of what the overall amounts were at this time of last year, I believe. So there's not a huge impact on the court. We are going to be operating remotely. And we're going to make every effort to make sure that anybody that wants to make use of the Wana Key Municipal Court System is able to do that. That's all that I have as far as general comments. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them or make Jody answer them.
And I did see, I had an email today about helping you guys with your June date to set up some sort of Zoom system. Happy to help. So we'll be, we'll be talking about that. So board members, questions for Judge or Jody? Raise your hand. Or Jody, did you want to add anything?
I just add that what we're doing is basically what all the courts are, around us are doing. With the plea sheets being mailed or delivered with the tickets, doing courts remotely. And so forth. So it's, it's a pretty statewide thing that's going on right now with the courts. And, and I've been working remotely and coming in the office once a week and it's been working okay. And answering emails, answering voicemails. And things are getting dropped in the Dropbox and people are making payments online or in the mail. So it's, it's been working very well. I haven't had any complaints. People have actually been very appreciative that we're not open and we're offering other options to make it safer for them. So I guess my only concern going forward, if we choose to open and need to have things in person, we're just going to need. Some good guidelines to follow with, you know, limiting the people in, having time to clean, limiting contact and so forth. But I think that's a general consensus across all the departments. So that's all I had to add. Thanks.
Board members, any questions? All right. Thanks, Nick and Jody. Appreciate it. Cindy's up. On deck is, let's see, just going around my virtual room here. Sue, you're next.
Thanks, Todd. Well, the senior center, although it's been closed, there's been a lot of services that have been ongoing since we closed our doors on March 16. Case management has been going on with those folks working from home. The month of April, we delivered almost 25, see, it was 2,439 meals. So we've been very busy here reaching out to our seniors. The primary calls we were getting were for some more services that we usually deliver. And those were foot care. That's a, we have a lot of people requesting that. Massage therapy, items from our lending closet and the tax assistance services. So what I focused on were those things that I have more control over. Tax assistance, we're being told that the AARP folks will not be coming back to help us with that. Foot care, we have, the person that does our foot care services is a registered nurse. And two of her volunteers are retired nurses. So that service, we're starting in June. It's being done very differently. She used to see about 15 people when she was here and each time, and she's here nine times a month. So now instead of that many people, she'll see eight when she comes in with gaps in between. So she can change clothes, change, she'll be wearing a mask, a shield and to do cleaning in between them. So we're setting up a whole process to keep people separated and as safe as possible when they're getting that service. There used to be some overlap between foot care service and massage. We won't be doing that. Those services will be done on different days. So we're really limiting the number of our customers that are coming in here to about 10 a day. I'm hoping in, in June that other staff will start coming back into, to work out of their offices. The lending closet, we are lending items out. If they are returned, they're going through an extensive cleaning process. The staff, when they're back, we all have pretty much our own office space. There's a lot of space between us. And we'll be using all this, the safe methods, wearing a mask when we're out with our customers and that. We're adding hand sanitizing stations. We already had some of those in place for our Meals on Wheels drivers. And we have been taking their temp, those home-delivered meal drivers. There's five every day that come in to do our routes. And senior center staff that are in the building, they have their temp taken. That will all continue. When someone comes in for their foot care appointment, they'll have their temp taken. There'll be a list of questions that they're answering as far as have they been feeling sick? Have they been around anyone who has been ill? And the same with massage therapy. So we're trying to follow a lot of the, the guidelines from Dane County and the CDC. I had Scott Russell in here this morning, just to make me feel better about the process that we're going through. For these two services to start up, the foot care and massage. And I, I feel really good. It appears we're on the right page. We're doing everything we need to do to keep the staff safe. And any of our clients and customers that come in. We are losing revenue. The senior center isn't a huge revenue place. But we do count on a lot of revenue from our trips that go on. And I have no idea when we'll be able to do any trips in the future. Badger Bus, the person that we worked with, she's been laid off, so we can't even contact her to ask about, you know, come October or November. I just don't know. So it is affecting our revenues that usually come in. I guess the senior center, I have no idea after June what we'll be adding. Our congregate meal site won't be opening anytime soon, I don't believe. And I do worry about that because the senior center, although we offer a lot of services. It's a, it's a meeting place for older adults. It's where people come and gather to drink coffee and chat about the new quick trip. Or whatever. And people come here to see their friends, make new friends. And we worry about those folks being, being isolated and not being able to do that. We worry about their increased anxiety and if they have cognitive issues, increased dementia. So I'm hoping at some point that they can come for those reasons, but I have no idea when. We're trying to offer some services. We're trying to offer some services. We're looking at some things, phone reassurance calls are being given. We just started our Tai Chi class on the local cable channel. And people are pretty excited about that. But as far as us being a gathering place, I don't know when that will happen. So we're, we're very slowly opening our doors to some of the things that, that help the older adults out. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Cindy. Appreciate the hard work of your team. You and your team, Bill.
So it is the most discriminatory year of my time. I mean, as far as this is going to be a difficult, are you because we now have patients zooming into us, I mean, older people zooming, is there any chance they can communicate with each other through that? Is there any, I understand it's hard. We have trouble just with my mom doing it, so.
Well, one of the groups that I know is trying to do it is we have a TOPS group, a weight loss group. There's about thirty people in that. And of the thirty, about twelve are able to Zoom with each other. So that leaves quite a few of them out. Some of our older adults don't even have computers. And that's why we went, rather than doing the Tai Chi class as a Zoom, we went to the cable channel. Very easy, turn on your TV, find that channel and do the Tai Chi class. And the phone, phone calls that our volunteers are making, since they're not out driving people to the doctor's appointments, many of them are making just calls on people they gave rides to, just to check on them. We're also looking into a Senior Connect program out of San Francisco where you connect and it's based on different topics. And you just call and you can listen. There's a facilitator and maybe they're talking about bird watching, photography, science. So we're trying to do those sorts of things for the folks that aren't tech savvy and good with computers.
Thanks.
Last week, our ukulele group gathered in a big circle in the parking lot and did their practice. It was a great thing to see.
Yeah, they're hoping to do that every other Friday. They set out in the parking lot. They're, they have their social distancing. But it's amazing the difference, the joy it brings them. There again, they do that because they love to play ukulele, but they love the companionship and camaraderie that goes along with that.
All right. Thanks again, Cindy. Sue and then Renee will be next.
Great. Thank you, Todd. Hi, everybody. So we too, Village Center, as Cindy said, the Senior Center, you know, we're a place where people come together. And so the last couple of months have been very different for us. We have spent a lot of time and energy canceling things, which is just not, not what we're used to doing, that is for sure. I think some of the, some of the good side of not having people in our building is we've spent a lot of time with our building maintenance staff, really taking great care of the building. And so that's been an unintended positive consequence of being closed. I think when people come back in, they're going to see shiny new floors and hand railings and paint and everything that you can think of, our team has done a really nice job of making really good use of their time. I think also outside, a lot of the things that have been keeping us busy are some park projects. So there's been some really positive things happening out in the park system as well. New playground for Water Tower Park. Hopefully we can get that playground in and then open sooner than later. Safety surfacing at Hanover Park. Tennis court at North Ridge is getting resurfaced this week. New batting cage, new scoreboards out at Meadowbrook Baseball Fields. So a lot of really fun projects that we have been able to complete with our teams being able to work with social distancing and Bill and his guys have been just great at scheduling and making some of those things happen. As far as the Village Center and Recreation Program is going, we have been spending a lot of time with some great partners. Wisconsin Park and Rec Association has been really strong. They've been coming together at daily Zooms on all sorts of different kinds of topics to talk about. How can we do the things that we do, offer programs to our communities? All in being safe for everybody. We also have a great working relationship with Public Health Madison in Dane County. They have assigned a specific staffer who works just with the Park and Rec Departments in our county. We talk to her at least weekly. Any kind of a question we have about moving forward, she's there to help us. The new guidelines that came out today, I haven't spent a lot of time with them yet, but they are very thorough and very clear steps will help us make decisions, but where we can move forward next. As with the Senior Center, we are looking at the idea of opening the center beginning in June on a very limited basis. It is our initial plan to start just with the fitness center, limited hours, by appointment only, limited number of people. We've been working really hard putting together detailed plans for social distancing, cleaning after every piece of equipment is being used, closing down halfway through the day and doing a complete disinfecting spray of the whole fitness center before we open back up again for the afternoon session. So lots of steps to try to help people get back in a little at a time. I would say probably the most asked question that we get is when will those tennis courts be open? And I'm happy to say tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. That is one of the things that came out today in the Forward Dane Plan is that tennis courts can be open, singles only if you're not related, but you will be able to go out and play tennis and pickleball. Unfortunately, skateboarding and playgrounds are not going to come until we get to phase two of the new plan. The problem there is really social distancing. When you have a dozen unrelated kids on a playground, how do you stop them from going down the slide together on the skate park, you know, a bunch of young teenagers on the skate park? How do you, how do you convince them to stay six feet away from each other? So I think those things are going to wait a little bit longer, but hopefully sooner than later. Finally, I guess the question about financial impacts. We definitely have had a significant financial impact on our department. We refunded a lot of program fees that had been paid for programs that would have taken place in this time. Many both Village Center and Park Shelter rentals were refunded to families who were unable to host those events. So we are anxious to get back to some kind of programming that will bring some revenues back into our department. But again, we have to make sure we're following all of the safety guidelines first. So that'll be our first priority. So any questions?
Go ahead, Bill.
Are you going to move any of the equipment to any of the unused rooms so you can get more people on it?
We are going to move some of the equipment around to make sure that the distancing is more appropriate. Some things might just get closed down, like every other treadmill. But we are definitely working on a plan to keep people at a distance, but allow them to come in and work out.
Are they difficult to move? Because I think that's what everybody's asking for right now is how do I get on that treadmill?
They are. They, they're extremely heavy, can't go on every, every surface in our building. So got some decisions yet to make.
Other questions for Sue? All right. Big thanks to you and your team too, Sue. Thank you. All right, Renee, and then Adam will finish it up.
Hey, everybody. Just give you a little update on the finance department and some things we're doing. Not much has changed since I last talked to the board. We're still continuing to, you know, support all the village departments and doing all the financial things that we need to do, payroll, accounts payable, cash receipting and that type of thing. But we are continuing to deliver it in a hybrid fashion of working from home, especially for the staff. People are working from home as much as possible, but then they're usually in maybe a couple mornings a week to do the stuff that has to be done in the office. For the most part, they're kind of alternating days, so that's working pretty well. And, you know, we can certainly keep going with that as long as we need to, whenever Village Hall opens. You know, we'll, we will, you know, be a part of that, but we're, we're able to get all of our work done in the method that we're doing. It's just to highlight a couple of things from the memo that I did. So our most frequent question really relates to people that are used to coming to Village Hall to make certain payments. They're calling and trying to figure out how they can pay us. And so we're directing them to either the Dropbox or mailing things in or paying by credit card online. And I think that's been working just fine. So that's the most frequent question that we get. We are answering emails and voicemails, you know, virtually as they come in because everybody is able to connect at home and take care of those items. I talked about in the memo, so we had already budgeted in 2020 for Lers to help us with some financial modeling and, you know, forward thinking and helping with our 2021 budget and beyond. And so they're already working. They have our data and some of the things that we know about so far to do some different scenarios. But obviously in the ever-changing climate that we're in, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with certain revenues. Will our state aids decrease, you know, because the state is experiencing their own financial troubles? So we're going to work with Lers to do various scenarios, which will help us not only with our 2021 budget planning, but even beyond that and just kind of see where we're at. And, you know, obviously we have to be pretty flexible because things are changing all the time. But we're hoping that they will get a first pass back to us, you know, within the next few weeks and that we can hopefully bring something to the Finance Committee to look at in a little more detail. And because, you know, starting in June, we already start our 2021 budget process. So, you know, we're trying to look ahead and see what might be on the horizon. Tomorrow, I have a call with other finance directors that are part of the Urban Alliance, which is part of the League of Municipalities. And this will be our second call with finance directors. So that's very helpful because the league is, you know, really trying to be an advocate for all of our municipalities in Wisconsin and just trying to figure out, you know, what is really going on at the state level. And just being able to hear what some of the other finance directors are experiencing is, you know, kind of helping all of us kind of gear up for, for what continues to be ahead for us. I guess that's mainly what I wanted to say, but I am happy to answer questions as you have them.
Thanks, Renee. Any board members? All right. Super. All right, we're going to go to Adam now. And I, you know, if I was thinking, I gotta apologize to Tara Swalv, who's, who has an item after this and she's been on, if I was thinking, I would have gotten you first. You decide to move, your item moved up here. I'm sorry. But hey, you know a whole lot. Exactly. All right, Adam.
All right. I'll, I'll try to keep it quick so we can keep moving. Really, not a lot has changed for us due to the way our building is designed. We've been able to keep our lobby open. There's a number of programs that we've put on hold. We're, we're still trying to do a lot of things over the phone to the best of our ability. Some of those programs, we'll have to have some decisions made here pretty soon regarding things like National Night Out, which are going to be challenging, given the partners that really help us put that program on and the risk to their staff. And that makes some challenges. So we'll have to make some decisions here pretty quick on that. We continue to keep up with all of our cleaning. We're doing some extra cleaning in the building. We'll probably continue to do that until it's safe to do so. A lot of our questions are kind of changing here as the orders change as far as parks and things like that. Nothing too surprising there. The biggest thing is, is we don't have any intention to make any of this permanent. It kind of goes against everything that we've always done and that we want our officers out there in the community, getting to talk to people, kind of giving them that personal customer service, one-on-one, that, that we haven't been able to do lately in most cases. And that's, that's difficult. So as soon as it's safe to do so, we're going to get back to the way we were doing things before and the services before. And, you know, financial concerns, nothing really of this year, but certainly this will be a long-lasting economic impact for the village and, and we're still going to need to add staff with the growth that's, that's going on. So that's, that's a bit of a concern for our building. But overall, the main goal is to keep, keep healthy and keep the virus out of our building. So.
Thanks, Adam. Questions on police functions? And next time you see Adam, or next time the board meets, Adam will be Chief Adam. Chief Plundles' last day, I think, is the twenty-ninth. Right, Adam? So Adam will take the helm right after that. So congratulations. With that, back to the board. It looks like the, the entire department head team is still here with you. Are there any other questions that you have for us regarding what we're dealing with now and what the future looks like? If not, Chris, you can move on in your agenda.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Thanks to all the department heads for taking time tonight to educate us and the public about what's going on in your departments. Todd, one question I would have that's not for any of them that are on the call or on the Zoom here is, is there a reason that we don't have fire, that we haven't heard from fire at all? Are they having any issues or anything that we need to be aware of or the public needs to know about?
I haven't heard from them. I wonder, so Renee, Renee is our staff liaison. And then we've got a couple of members of the board who are on the commission. Is there anything that you can share?
This is Bill. Hasn't been too much. I mean, it's just a matter of their equipment basically sets them up for being not exposed in some ways. And there's a more washable in some ways than the other PPE. Their PPE is to keep them there and other agents on them. So they're kind of insulated from some of the events, but getting, we're in the process of getting more equipment all the time.
They don't have public interaction at the fire station. What about Brian? Is he doing inspections, fire inspections?
I think he delayed them and the idea was that he was going to go back to them with warning and such. So I can't actually speak to that. I don't remember. Maybe Phil does, whether he was going back.
He's going back soon, but they're being very proactive on their equipment. They purchased an industrial sprayer so they can really douse them down with disinfectant and everything. And they're doing everything except meeting socially.
And they have a new wash machine too. They have everything. I mean, basically they're fairly proactive compared to, just based on their business.
Renee, did you have anything to add or are you good?
No, I was just going to say that what they said is, is, you know, what I recall from the last meeting, which was via Zoom. And yeah, they, yeah, they're just maintaining.
Okay, Nyla, you got a question? You're muted at the moment.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm wondering if there's going to be a plan for, I know it won't be happening for some time, but for if and when board meetings begin being held in the town hall, the village hall again. If there's been any thought about that, keeping board members safe as, as well as possible, possible people coming to attend the meetings. And if we get to that point, if we would also consider, even though the village hall may be open to limited people, if we would also consider continuing Zoom participation, because even though things may open up a little bit, that doesn't mean that because even though things may open up a little bit, that doesn't mean that all people would be, you know, feel safe going out at all. So what I'm saying is, it's kind of like what Scott was saying. Different people see things differently and they're acting in different ways. And I'm, I'm not saying none of us should stay, shouldn't stay safe. We should all stay safe, but I'm, I'm just wondering if you're making plans.
Yeah, good, good question. In, to your last point, in my memo about this, I wrote that there's some things, some bells that can't be unrung now. And one of those is our familiarity and, and the public's familiarity with alternate ways to participate in meetings. So to necessarily take away Zoom as an alternative going forward to supplement in-person activities might be something worth thinking about before we do away with. As far as getting together, I think the, the big issue is going to be when the, when we have a regional, regional support for ending the social distancing requirements. So that's probably going to be when things start to feel a little normal in terms of everybody in the same room together like we were before. And I don't know when to expect that social distancing expectations to be loosened. You know, maybe we could talk about an approach where we actually have the board in the meeting socially distanced, but then zoom in the public. We could, you know, I worry about, you know, do we limit public attendance to only X amount and not other? I haven't thought about it deeply because I know that the social distancing thing is, is really kind of firmly still in place. But like you, and I was talking to Chris earlier, we want to get back together. The thought of this being our permanent approach is, would just be a terrible thought. So let me, I'm going to continue to be working with my colleagues on their plans, learning what other cities are doing and creative ways to approach it. And hopefully in short order, provide the board with an update and maybe some more direct, specific plans going forward. So, yeah, you'll hear more shortly.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you all of our department heads. We're going to move on with our meeting here. Next topic is to discuss and take action on resolution to grant an extension of declaration of emergency. In the, am I writing this? Yes. In the village of Wannakee and continuation of joint executive authority. Brian?
And I would just jump in quick. The other departments represented on here, if you wanted to jump off and enjoy the rest of your evening, you're welcome to.
So just to be clear for everyone, all board members, all members of the public, the resolution that we are talking about has absolutely nothing to do with the stay-at-home orders that have been issued by the state and by Dane County. And if you recall, the, the village adopted its first resolution, its, its, its first declaration of emergency back on April 6th, before any of the stay-at-home orders had been issued. And what the village did back in, in April was it adopted a resolution that gave Chris and Todd joint executive authority to implement measures in response to COVID-19. We declared a declaration of local state of emergency in the village. We, we, the village board resolved that the full allocation of village resources be available to ensure the continuation of core village services in the midst of the pandemic. And the other thing that we did was that the village board directed all department heads to keep track of expenses related to COVID-19. And, and if, to see if we can get reimbursed in the future. And, and that's all this resolution is that's before you tonight, is to extend the initial resolution, which is again primarily administrative in nature. The reason why we need to extend it or, or it's up for consideration is the, the initial resolution stated that our local declaration of emergency would be in place until the state of Wisconsin's public health emergency declaration is lifted. And it's kind of confusing right now to try to determine exactly what, you know, what it, you know, we know that the state stay-at-home order was overturned by the Wisconsin Supreme Court last week. The state had adopted a public health emergency prior to that. And so I think, you know, to the extent that you want, still want, you know, the, the joint executive powers to move forward. If you still want village departments to be tracking the expenses that they've incurred in response of COVID-19 so that we can potentially get some money back in the future. That's essentially the purpose for the extension of this declaration until, you know, it's proposed to be until July 15.
Board members' questions. I'll go to Gary Hertzberg first.
No questions.
Phil Williams?
I, I have no questions. I'd just like to say that even though it says April 6th, on March 15th, Todd was very active in implementing directives that he'd gotten out of the state and county. So the April 6th is, was the official board meeting where we adopted this. We were well ahead of this and any attention that we got on social media saying we were late acting was entirely wrong. Todd and his team, two weeks ahead of that and more, were well on top.
Okay, thanks Phil. Bill Random?
Nothing.
Kristin Rungy?
Nothing, but I'll echo Phil that Todd and the team were fantastic.
Nyla Frye?
Her, her lips said no questions.
An easy way for you to know that you're not, if you're going to be on is look at the little red microphone. If it's not on, you will be speaking. That's, that's, that's the.
I think, I think I'm going to have to look into that with you, Nyla. It looks like she might have like a, her option might be flipped opposite somehow. We'll, we'll work on that, Nyla.
Perfect. Okay. And I, I don't have any comments on this one way or another. I think that it's important that if we could get some money back, that's a, that's a good thing, obviously with what we're doing here. So.
You want a motion on this, Chris?
Sure.
I would move to extend the existing declaration. Second.
So motion by Gary Hertzberg, second by Bill Random. Brian has his hand up saying, whoa. Go ahead, Brian.
No, I just, I, that, the, the, I just, there's a resolution that's on page 99 of your, of your packet. I just want to make sure that Gary's motion includes motion to approve the resolution that's on page 99. And that is the resolution extending the declaration.
Yes, I accept that. Still second.
And still second for Bill. Okay. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Okay, roll call please. There she is.
A.
Chris Elner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So I don't know if you guys can see this, but I lost my office space to my wife who's a first grade teacher. And I ended up with blue something on my desk that I touched and now my, I have like fingerprints blue. So sorry to interrupt that, but I looked down and my hands are all blue. So I'm going to use my left hand if I need to put my hand up now. All right. So moving on.
And I would just ask Chris, Nyla, you're unmuted now, but why don't you just stay, leave it like it is and we'll, we'll work on things later. So just stay unmuted for the rest of the night.
Just be quiet.
All right.
Okay. So this one, I know somebody's been waiting very patiently for us to get to. So let's get right there. Discuss and take action on resolution allowing pictures of Wannakee Community High School seniors to be placed on banners on village streetlight poles as a response to COVID-19. Tara, you have the floor.
Trying to get my video here. Lots of buttons. Hi, guys.
Hello.
And I don't think Tara was prepared with a particular presentation this evening, certainly here to answer questions that you have. And I think Brian was going to walk through the work he did to prepare a resolution for the board. But Tara, don't let me steal your thunder if you did want to.
You're correct in saying, I don't, I'm prepared to ask question, answer questions.
Okay, then Brian, go ahead.
Sure. So on page, pages 101 and 102 of your packet, working with Todd, we took a lot of the information that was shared at the last village board meeting regarding kind of the practice that has occurred at the high school and the way that the, the high school and the students and their parents and, and the, the village are able, and the town are able to recognize seniors. And then obviously, you know, a lot of information in the resolution related to COVID-19 and how it's disrupted certain things and how it's very, you know, obviously created a lot of extraordinary circumstances. And so what we did was we essentially laid the groundwork for the resolution that would allow, you know, I'm paraphrasing here, but if you look at paragraph two of the resolution on page two, it would allow these banners with the pictures to go up on the main street light poles. And then there is another paragraph or another portion of the resolution. You know, I love, there's a lot of logistics associated with getting this done. And paragraph three is not intended to identify everything that village staff will need to work on with other parties to, to see this through. But we identified certain things that I believe the village board wants to see happen. For example, based on the discussion at the last village board meeting, my understanding is that whoever is putting these banners, who is ever fixing banners to the light poles, it needs to be village personnel for liability reasons. And we want to make sure that we obtain all the necessary consents, whether it's from students who are older than 18 years old or from parents who have minor students. We want to make sure that people have the opportunity to get their pictures placed on these banners and that they consent to that. You know, one of the things that I, I don't know if, if there's been much discussion at this point, but there's going to have to be a period of time where the banners will be up there and then eventually we'll have to take them down. And I'm thinking, you know, that Todd's probably going to need, this would give Todd the, the ability to work with folks on that. And, and the last thing is there's language in there talking about the idea that the village would be getting reimbursed for expenses associated with this project. And so it really just, the resolution really just captures the discussion, hopefully, that the village board had at its last board meeting on this topic.
Okay, board members, do you have any questions? I'll start with Phil.
I have no questions.
Nyla Frye?
Were you successful in working with a photographer to get senior pictures of those who may not have seen your pictures?
So I worked with Mr. Borowski and we communicated to the student body that if somebody was missing a photo or needed one taken, we were to be reached out to and we had a photographer ready. At this time, everybody's had one and nobody's requested.
Thank you.
Kristin Rungy?
No questions.
Bill Random?
No questions. Sounds great.
Gary Hertzberg?
No. Good idea. Let's do it.
Okay. So then it sounds like we need a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay.
The motion.
Was that you? I'm sorry. I just want to make sure it was Nyla.
It's Nyla.
Yeah. Okay. Now with the motion.
I make a motion to move, I move to approve the resolution, resolution allowing pictures of Wannakee Community High School seniors to be placed on banners on village streetlight poles as a response to COVID-19.
Second.
Second, was that Bill Random?
Yes.
Okay, second by Bill Random. Any other comments? Raise your hand, please. Otherwise, roll call vote, please.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Phil Random?
Yes.
Chris Elner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Tara, thank you for all your work on this and all the people helping you. I'm sure you have helped. Thank you for also waiting for our meeting to have all of our other agenda items there before you. So.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Have a good night. Be well.
Thanks.
Okay, next item we have is updating discussion regarding sex offender residency restriction regulation. Todd, are you introducing this or Brian, are you talking?
Brian has it.
Okay. So this goes back to a, a meeting. I don't know exactly when it was. I think it might've been February of this year. I know it was earlier this year where we had an initial discussion regarding, you know, municipal authority to limit where sex offenders may be able to reside. And staff was given some, you know, you, you gave us some guidance on the update that you would like to see, like to receive. And tonight we have the ability, I have the ability to give you an update. And really my update is going to focus on really two things. The first one is just, one of the things I did was I did, I looked at cities and villages in Dane County to try to find out what, if any municipalities have a sex offender residency restriction ordinance. You know, I, different municipalities have better search engines for their ordinances than others, but I feel pretty comfortable. I looked at 17 different municipalities, cities or villages within Dane County. Two of them had sex offender residency restrictions. One was the city of, of Sun Prairie and the other was the village of Cottage Grove. So I know that that was something that a board member said asked about at the last meeting. And so I don't know, Chris, if you want to, you know, ask questions about that right now or if you want me to move on to the second kind of portion.
Well, let's see if the board members have questions about that. Gary Hertzberg? Gary shook his head. No. Okay, Phil Williams?
No. No.
Bill, Bill Random?
No.
Kristin Rungy?
No.
Nyla Frye?
No.
And I don't either. So go ahead, Brian.
Okay. So then what I did was I, I wanted to take a look at the different ordinances to see how they address this. And I looked at four different ordinances, the city of Sun Prairie, the village of Cottage Grove, the city of Reedsburg and the city of Brookfield. And I guess I want to, I want to focus on the city of Sun Prairie because if, if the village board is going to want to move forward with this and, and, and to ask the, the staff to draft some type of ordinance and, and you don't have to do that tonight at all, but that could be an outcome. I think my recommendation would be probably to, you know, work off of the Sun Prairie ordinance. And I, and I say that for a number of reasons. One is, when, when you look at their ordinance, Sun Prairie actually first adopted a sex offender residency restriction back in October of 2008. But then, you know, one of the things that we talked about at the last village board meeting was in 2017, I think it was 2017, there was a, a federal court decision in Wisconsin that addressed these residency restrictions and overturned an ordinance that had been adopted by the village of Pleasant Prairie. And so one of the important things about the Sun Prairie ordinance is, is it notes that it's, after it adopted this ordinance initially, then it took another look at it and now has made some changes to their ordinance since that federal court case. And so, you know, it's, it's nice to know that somebody's looked at this and, and made some adjustments based on that court case. The other thing that this, this ordinance does, which I, which is important based on our last discussion is there, it is, it does reference different materials, written materials that have been reviewed by the board or by the council in this case and by its staff as a way to support the ordinance. Because as we discussed the last time, you know, one of the downfalls of the ordinance in Pleasant Prairie that got overturned by the court was they didn't necessarily have any materials or educational basis to support their ordinance. So, Sun Prairie has taken a look at that. So one of the other things that, that the, that this ordinance does and that we need, you need to do if you're going to adopt an ordinance is there are different levels of sex offenses under the Wisconsin state statutes. And for an individual that has been deemed a sexually violent person, there's actually a, a portion of the statutes, chapter 980, that deals with those individuals and has residency restrictions. And so essentially if the village is going to adopt an ordinance, we would not, we would not be able to, except under very limited circumstances, we would not be able to dictate where a sexually violent person can reside because that's already covered by the state statute. And the Sun Prairie ordinance gets into that exception, which is important. Now there are other levels of sexually, the exact term is, there are other terms, serious child sex offender. There are other individuals who engage in serious sex offenses. Those are the types of people who, you know, within the Sun Prairie ordinance and within other ordinances, that is where they place restrictions. And typically what they have is they will have a definition that will kind of identify, you know, areas where children may be located. In this particular ordinance, it references a protected location. And protected locations can include daycare centers, athletic fields, libraries, parks, playgrounds, things of that nature. And so then you have in the ordinance, and in this particular ordinance, they say, it's unlawful for any designated offender to establish a permanent residence or temporary residence within 500 feet of any protected location. And, and they also prevent. And, and they also prevent loitering by individuals who've engaged in that, caught previously in that conduct from being near those protected areas. And so I think that's one of the good things about this ordinance is, and, and I should add, it also deals with renting. You can't rent to somebody who's, you know, identified within the code as a sex offender if they, if the, if the rental property would be within 500, I think it's 500 feet of the, one of these protected locations. And so it, it, there are, there's other details within the ordinance that I could get into if you want me to. But, you know, I think that kind of the, coming back to you from the last meeting, it is only two of 17 municipalities. And also I looked at the Dane County ordinances. I did searches and I didn't find anything within the county ordinances addressing residency for sex offenders. So, you know, it, it's a limited number of cities and villages in Dane County, but there are two. The Sun Prairie ordinance, I think it would, would be a good framework if this is something that the board is interested in pursuing. Because I think it, it has some good definitions in there. It acknowledges what we can and can't do. And it also touches on not just residency, but loitering and also temporary residency.
Okay. So I, I wanna kind of go around and ask questions for everybody. But before I do that, I see that Adam Kreitzman's still on here with us. And since he's gonna be our new police chief, do you have, Adam, are you there still?
Yep, I am.
Do you have anything you'd like to say in regards to this?
No, not, not specifically. I mean, I, I would agree with Brian. You know, there's only two in the county. And I think a lot of those other agencies are probably looking at it saying that we, we put a lot of faith in Department of Corrections to, to kind of take the lead on that. My concern, I guess, would be from an enforcement standpoint, you know, municipalities are issuing, you know, a municipal fine. And then how long is it going to take and to what steps do we take after that? And how much time does that take? You know, we wouldn't typically go to a place and say, you have to be out tomorrow. But the Department of Corrections might be able to do something like that. So, you know, giving somebody time then to move out. And then are we gonna issue a citation if they don't move out? And then how many days before it would be maybe another site, you know what I mean? Another citation. And I, I don't think we're seeing quick results necessarily. But again, I'll, I'll say that I would defer to Brian, I guess, on what his thoughts are on that. And again, I haven't seen the Sun Prairie one, but those would be my concerns, you know, from an enforcement standpoint.
Thank you. Brian, any comments on that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I would, I would agree with Adam. And I think Chief Pundle made similar comments at, at the meeting that we had earlier this year where, you know, enforcement becomes an issue. It's, it's certainly an ordinance. If you're gonna have it on the books, you're gonna need, the village would need to enforce it. I agree with Adam that, you know, this would be a citation issue. At some point in time, if the person does not leave, then, you know, that the, I think the village would have the ability to go see injunction relief to try to get the person removed. But I, I mean, to the extent that anyone would think, anyone would believe that if, if we have somebody in violation of the ordinance, that all of a sudden we're gonna get them out by, you know, close of business that day, it's, it's not gonna happen that quickly. There is going to be a number of steps in the enforcement process to have somebody removed under the ordinance. And, and I, the only thing, the other thing I would note, you know, and I understand there's certainly a justification for this, but this would all be at the village's cost, too.
Okay. Thank you. Kristin Rungy.
No questions.
Bill Rannam? Bill Williams?
No questions.
Nyla Frye?
I, I just have a comment. And that is, I'm, I'm thinking that we're just adding an extra layer of bureaucracy that might, may not accomplish anything and just cost the village to do, to try to do something or take action when the Department of Corrections may do it. I don't know.
Okay. Gary Hertzberg?
Yeah, I'm a little bit torn to Nyla's comment that, you know, if you got put in this situation in the Department of Corrections, for whatever reason, you know, placed someone here that we thought might be a threat. I mean, I think there'd be a lot of families in town questioning us why, you know, we hadn't thought about this to consider. I don't wanna have an ordinance just to have an ordinance. And I don't wanna make it more difficult, you know, for Adam's team. You know, if this, if this is a tool that can help, you know, the community and our police force, I think it's a good ordinance. I'm just not sure at this point.
I would, I would agree 100% with what Gary said, what Nyla said. I, I'm, of course, we wanna protect our, our, our families, our children, everything in the community. I don't know that this does anything to help that. I think Corrections has a policy in place. They're the ones that can take care of this. I also look and think, do we have a, something in place that we have somebody who has seven drunk driving offenses that they hit a little child? Can they live in our community? They made a mistake. They have a mental illness potentially. And yet they can come into our community. And when, when they're released and, and back into the society. But, but, so I have issues with that in thinking of who are, who are punishing and when, what degrees are we punishing them? And, you know, wanting to be an open community for people, this is a restrictive policy for letting people in that, that may have a minor offense potentially. Granted, there's others that are gonna have terrible offenses that we're talking about, but that's what Corrections is for. And I don't know if we should be doing that at our, our level with the costs, I think, that we would incur to really not get any better results. I'm not, I'm not hearing anything that's saying we're gonna get better results as a result of this. So. I didn't miss anybody, by the way. Phil, did I ask you on this one? I feel like I, I don't know if I asked you. I did? Okay, good.
So for, for tonight, then, Chris, I think Brian and I are looking for direction to staff, well, perhaps no direction to staff, which, which would end the research and the pursuit on the issue. Or if there's further questions or further exploration or desire, we can take that. Brian?
Yeah, I, I kind of piggyback off what you're saying, Todd. I mean, you, you don't have to make a decision tonight. This is something that you can chew on. And, you know, the, the, one of the other benefits that I would tell you of the Sun Prairie ordinance, if, if you're even, if you're gonna consider it, is it, it's actually pretty straightforward. And, you know, I could send it to you. Obviously, people from the public can look at it. You know, the, I, I would say this. I mean, going back to what I said earlier, when it comes to the sexually violent person that is covered under chapter 980, that's, that's something that Corrections is already handling. And, you know, again, with very limited exceptions, essentially, well, very, very limited exceptions. We can't get involved in that. That's something that the state law trumps whatever we would have and Corrections takes care of it. It's, it's the other offenses, and I, and I agree with what Chris said, where there can be some that can be, you know, when you look on the spectrum, there are some that are extremely serious, although they may not rise to the level of sexually violent person. There are others that would be less serious. And, you know, the one thing that I would say, and then again, you don't need to make a decision tonight, but if, if this is a direction that the village board would wanna go to, to in the future, I, I, you know, most of the stuff that we do, a lot of our ordinances, like most municipalities, is complaint driven. This would be one where we would probably wanna be a little bit more proactive. We would want to, you know, this is one of the ordinances where you would really need to enforce it, I think.
And the one, Chris, the one thing that I'm, it would be nice to know what that, the different levels of the Department of Corrections rules are in place and how that would compare to our ordinance. I mean, do they cover everything or are there gaps in that ordinance that we may wanna consider this more seriously?
Well, I, I can, I can answer that question right now. I mean, good that, the, the, where, where municipalities come into play in having these ordinances is with the nonviolent, the, the, the individuals who are not deemed sexually violent persons. It, it's the other, it's the, it's the other sex offenses that where there are no state residency restrictions, that the municipalities have the ability to have some, you know, as long as they've reviewed the materials and come to the conclusion, you know, that the other communities have come to that have adopted these ordinance, it's, it's those other offenders, the other sex offenders, where you do have the ability to, you know, potentially limit their residency. And they are not covered under the state residency statute.
So how would you guys, I mean, we need to kind of give some direction as far as how we'd wanna proceed. It sounds like we can say, you know, let's proceed and go down the Sun Prairie path. We can do nothing. We can chew on this for a couple of weeks and come back and revisit it. After people have some time to think about it a little more, maybe we can get some information from Brian, same thing out to the public with regards to what it would look like. You were hearing about it. I'd like to kind of see it myself, how that would work.
I would vote to revisit it in a couple of weeks.
Same.
Same.
Yeah. Do we need to make a motion to table it then? Is that what we do?
Yeah, just until a future meeting.
I move to table this.
Can we, this item is not noticed for action. It's only updated discussion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think that you actually need to take action right now. I mean, it, it, it's, it's something that's.
But it sounds like, Brian, what I'm saying is just, let, let's table it, so to speak, for two weeks. If you can get that information out to us so we can look at, the public can see it. And then we can have a little more educated decision for the next meeting and just give some time to chew on this one.
Yep, exactly. And yeah, I, I agree with that. And I don't think you need actual emotion or anything of that nature. It seemed to be that that was a consensus.
Is there any other board members that, I mean, I think we had everybody just about that was on board with that. Phil, I don't know if you said anything.
That's fine. We can wait.
Nyla, I think you are good. Yes?
I'm good. Yep.
Here and Bill were both good. So, okay. So let's move on then. And we'll see that again in two weeks. All right. Our last item is discuss and take action on a resolution to apply for a loan from the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands Trust Fund Loan Program to reimburse library construction costs originally paid for by the general fund. Renee?
Yeah. So many of you may recall, oh, oh, kind of way back when the funding for the, the new library was discussed, it was recommended by Ellers, our financial advisor, that the final borrowing be actually in the form of a state trust fund loan that we would do after all the costs had been received and paid for. We knew what, what it cost. And that, that piece of it occurred in early 2020. We, we got all the final bills. And the reason they suggested a state trust fund loan is because you can prepay that without penalty, which you can't for something like a general obligation borrowing. And we know we have future revenues still coming in that will help to pay for the new library, including donations that were pledged over a number of years. Some of those are still coming over the next couple of years. And then in the, the project plans, we had budgeted in there for the sale of the old library, or as we have discussed at some other meetings, perhaps that would be the sale of Village Hall with a movement to the old library. But the sale of some building was anticipated to be, to assist with paying for the new libraries costs. So as I said, we know the final costs of the library have come through. There's, so this seemed to be a good time to go ahead and, and apply for this loan. The way it works, they kind of do a pre-screening. So we've already been pre-screened. And this is, you know, a project that would qualify for a state trust fund loan. But the, there's a rather lengthy resolution that is prepared by this, the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. That is what we would need to adopt. And then I can, you know, we get all the proper signatures and the minutes from this meeting, and then I can complete the application process. And then we'd likely be able to draw down the money in June after there, they have a board meeting where they accept the application or whatever. We can draw down the money. So I, I have applied for $1 million, but we only need to draw down what we actually need. And so in checking with the state bank across planes, there are some donations still in that account currently that we haven't drawn down yet. So we would not have to draw down the full amount. It'd be closer to 930,000 at this point. And then, like I said, when, hopefully, we will sell a building and get some proceeds we can use to pay that down and also donations coming through over the next couple of years.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, Nyla Frye, any questions for Renee?
Yeah. What's going on with, at one time, the, I think Todd was going to look into the possibly different scenarios for selling the current Village Hall. I know there's been a lot going on, Todd, with everything that's hit, but has anything moved on that?
Yeah, the, the game, the, the game changed. We, we issued our RFP for proposals on Village Hall a couple of weeks, maybe a week or so before things really started to go weird on us. There were, there were three or four developers, interested parties that had started kicking the tires on looking at this property. But the moment things really went into lockdown was the moment it went dead silence. And I'm not surprised that when that RFP process closed, there were no proposals. I wasn't, I really wasn't expecting any. And that was, that was maybe a month or so ago. Talking to the consultant who helped us with that RFP, he agrees that the, the, the value in the building remains. We just think that the timing was, was bad and that in, hopefully, not too long in the future here, we will simply reissue the RFP and redo the process to solicit proposals from the development community.
Thank you.
So, but we're probably, you know, a couple of months out before we start thinking about whether that makes sense again.
Okay. Anything else, Nyla? Are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Gary Hertzberg?
I'm good.
Kristin Rungy?
I'm good.
Bill Rannam?
Good.
Bill Williams?
Good.
Okay. I have no comments. So we just look for a motion to approve the change that we really already had established. Go ahead.
I move, we approve the attached resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands.
I second.
Motion by Phil, second by Kristin Rungy. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Rannam?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
One final motion.
I move to adjourn.
By Kristin Rungy to adjourn. Second by Bill Rannam. Roll call vote, please.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Rannam?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, everybody. We'll see you on June 1st.
Thank you.
Committees.
Fair. Good night, everyone.
Bye.